I only wore a tie today.
Arvis wears shorts and a blazer, so, you know, come on.
I'd like to call this meeting of the Elkhart City Council to order. If we could stand and say the pledge.
Mr. Thomas, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a republic which is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stand for a moment of silent reflection. Angie, will you call the roll, please? Counselor Holtz.
Present.
Counselor Curry.
Here.
Counselor King.
Here.
Counselor Mishler.
Present.
Counselor Fish.
Here.
Counselor Hines.
Here.
Counselor Crabtree.
Present.
Counselor Henke.
Here.
Counselor Dawson.
Present.
I'm going to ask for a motion to amend the agenda to include the election of 2024 council officers.
The move is stated.
Second. Moved by Mr. Henke, second by Ms. Hines. Voice vote on acceptance of the agenda as amended? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We will take all nominations for council president for 2024 and then vote on them one at a time in the order in which they were nominated.
Madam Chair.
Yes?
This is for president, correct?
Yes, I open the floor for nominations for president for 2024.
I nominate Mr. Crabtree. Need a second. Okay, orders have been given.
Motion fails for lack of a second.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I move to nominate Councilman-at-large Arvis Dawson to the office of President of the Elkhart City Common Council.
And are there any other nominations?
I nominate, oh, sorry. Oh, this is the present, I'm sorry.
Yes, Tonda.
Yeah, we had a second, we had a second. Is there any other nominations?
I nominate Alex Holtz.
I'm going to decline the nomination. But I do appreciate it, thank you.
Any others? Okay, I now close the nominations and ask the clerk to take a roll call vote on Councilman Arvis Dawson as the president for the 2024 term. Counselor Holtz.
Yes.
Counselor Curry.
Yes.
Counselor King.
Yes.
Counselor Mishler.
Aye.
Counselor Fish.
Yes.
Counselor Hines.
Yes.
Counselor Crabtree.
Yes.
Counselor Henke.
No.
Counselor Dawson.
Aye.
Passes eight to one. So I will now turn the gavel over to the new council president. Well, Councilman Arvis Dawson, please take the chair. Well, Councilman Arvis Dawson, please take the chair.
Thank you. At this time, we'll take nominations for vice president. Are there any nominations for vice president? Mr. Henke.
I nominate Chad Crabtree.
There's a second. Seeing none, are there any nominations for vice president?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Snipes.
I nominate Dwight Fish.
Mrs. Dwight Fish has been nominated, there's a second?
Second.
Second? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, close the floor. Angie, would you do a roll call vote on Dwight Fish as vice president, please?
Counselor Holtz.
Yes.
Counselor Curry.
Yes.
Counselor King.
Yes.
Counselor Mishler.
Aye.
Counselor Fish.
Yes.
Counselor Hines.
Yes.
Counselor Crabtree.
Yes.
Counselor Henke.
No.
Counselor, President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes eight to one.
Thank you. Can I ask for a motion to approve the minutes of November 6, 2023?
So moved.
Got a motion by Mr. Mishler, there's a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Hines, a discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Presentations and introductions. At this time, we have a presentation that we previously made with the invisible Sagamore of the Wabash Award at our last council meeting. We tonight actually have the document, and we'd like to present it to Mr. Brian Thomas, a councilman of 20 years in the second district. Would you please come forward, Brian, and accept this on behalf of the state of Indiana, the governor and the state of Indiana for the service that you have provided to us. Mayor.
Well, should I, well, I take, once some of you, some of you were not at the meeting in which Brian was presented with this so duly and worthy. I'll read the Sagamore of the Wabash and what it means and represents to the state of Indiana. State of Indiana, Council of the Sagamores of the Wabash, Eric J. Holcomb, Governor of the State of Indiana. Know all men by these presents, whereas the greatness of the sons of Indiana derives in part from qualities possessed by the noble chieftains of the Indiana tribes which once roamed and domained, and whereas it has been immemorial custom of the state of Indiana to attract to its support those who have exhibited such qualities, and whereas there has been endeared himself to the citizens of Indiana, one Brian Thomas, distinguished by his humanity in living, his loyalty in friendship, his wisdom in counsel, and his inspiration in leadership. This is so serious, I got to keep going, Brian. I cannot stop. Now, therefore, recognizing his greatness and desiring to avail himself of his counsel, I do hereby appoint him a chieftain upon my staff with the rank and title of Sagamore of the Wabash. Witness my hand and the seal of the council of the Sagamores at Indianapolis, Indiana, this the 18th day of December in the year of our Lord 20,023.
Brian, turn around, we need some pictures this way. This way. Want to get a picture? Oh, yes, most certainly, yeah. Would you like to, would you like to say anything? The mic is yours.
Well, a lot of you had a lot to do with, you know, me receiving this, serving with me on council for various years, more so than some others, but I did get official notice by email from the governor's office the other day that my official chieftain name is Running Short Man. So I will be going by that from now on. That's all I need to say. You all realize what this means to me, and I thank all of you for any part that you've played in this. But before I sit down, I do have to congratulate the incoming council on the efficient way that you've already started the year by having the president and the vice president seated in the correct seats even before the election. Nicely done.
Forward thinking, we call it forward thinking.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Unfinished business, reports of council, council committees, there is none. Proposed ordinance on second and third, reading, Angie, would you read proposed ordinance 23-0-27 by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 23-0-27, an ordinance vacating Pacific Street, a public way within the city of Elkhart, Indiana.
Can I get a motion and a second to adopt this, on second reading? Got a motion by Mr. Henke.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Hines, council discussion, is there any council discussion?
Staff report?
Is there a staff report? I think it was an alley vacation, a street vacation? Yeah, it's in the River District, so.
Sorry. Yeah, so this is the vacation of Pacific Street, it is in the River District. In the development agreement that we have completed with the developer in the Zone One redevelopment proposal and plan, they are going to return it to a private street. There will be, I believe, residential units kind of fronting on it, it's meant to be much more pedestrian oriented, matching kind of the overall feel of the River District development. And the developer will have the responsibilities of all the maintenance required that goes along with it, so.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Henke.
Mike, there won't be a significant cost, but can you qualify the cost of just vacating it, or there's no cost at all?
There's no cost at all to vacating it.
Any other council discussion? Mr. Mishler.
Are there any concerns regarding police or fire access? Should it be vacated? Is this going to impact services at all? No, it will not. That will be all reviewed in the tech review process as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Henke.
Any utility easements?
Any utility easements that would be for public utilities will still remain.
Okay, and we have the right of way of at all times, then?
We'd have the ability to use, to execute on the utility easements, correct?
But, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you, Mike, I appreciate it. Open up to the public, is anyone in the public would like to speak with regards to this ordinance? So please come forward. Seeing none, turn it back to the council, any other council discussion? Angie, would you do a roll call vote on second reading, please?
Counselor Hines. Holtz.
Aye.
Counselor Curry.
Yes.
Counselor King.
Yes.
Counselor Mishler.
Aye.
Counselor Fish.
Yes.
Counselor Hines.
Yes.
Counselor Crabtree.
Yes.
Counselor Henke.
Aye.
President Dawson.
Aye.
Third and final, please.
Got a motion from Mr. Henke, second from Mr. Mishler, for third and final reading. Angie, would you read the ordinance, both ordinance by title and the roll call vote, please?
Proposed ordinance 23-0-27, an ordinance vacating Pacific Street, a public way within the city of Elkhart, Indiana. Counselor Holtz.
Aye.
Counselor Curry.
Yes.
Counselor King.
Yes.
Counselor Mishler.
Aye.
Counselor Fish.
Yes.
Counselor Hines.
Yes.
Counselor Crabtree.
Yes.
Counselor Henke.
Aye.
President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes nine to zero on third and final.
Thank you. Angie, would you read proposed ordinance 23-0-38 by title only, please?
Proposed ordinance 23-0-38, an ordinance amending ordinance number 5959, fixing the salaries and wages for appointed officers and other salaried employees of the city of Elkhart, Indiana for the calendar year 2024, to authorize and approve the payment of residency bonus to all current full-time employees of the office of Elkhart City Clerk.
Thank you. Can I get a motion, second to adopt this ordinance, please? Can I get a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance? Can I get a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance? Seeing none, ordinance failed due to lack of a motion. Angie, there are no proposed ordinance and resolutions referred to committee. There are no tabled ones, ordinance on first reading. Would you read proposed ordinance 24-0-01 by title only, please?
Proposed ordinance 24-0-01, an ordinance amending the zoning map created pursuant to ordinance number 4370, the zoning ordinance of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, as amended to rezone 5100 and 5130 Middlebury Street, Elkhart, Indiana, 46516, from O Office District to B2 Community Business District.
I get a motion and, no, there's no objections, I'll pass this on to second reading. No objections, all right. Angie, would you read proposed resolution 24-R-01 by title, please?
Proposed resolution 24-R-01, a resolution of the common council of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, approving an application for lead hazard reduction capacity building grant funds and recommending submission of the application.
Thank you. Can I get a motion and a second to adopt this resolution?
So moved. Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Curry, second by Mr. Fish, and yes, ma'am, the mic is yours.
Mary Casca, Assistant Director, Community Development. Thank you for entertaining the resolution, the first one of the year, number one, happy to be in that position. This is a grand application to the Department of Housing and Urban Development for lead hazard reduction capacity building funds. We'll be applying for about $1,050,000 to build capacity to raise awareness of the issue of lead in the home, particularly homes with children under the age of six. And there, we know that there are about 2,400 homes in the city of Elkhart with children under the age of six that become kind of the universe of potentially having a problem with lead. And the current laws in Indiana as far as health tests require that every child between, who was either one or two years old, and there are about 6,000 children between the ages of one and two, 3,000 born every year, that should be offered a blood test to test lead in their blood. Parents can refuse that test, but they should be offered that test. And so, once those tests are taken and blood, elevated blood levels of lead is determined, there can be an assessment done inside the home as far as the source of the lead and then abatement of lead. And so what we're wanting to do with the grant is to build the capacity to raise awareness in the community of this problem, because this problem with youth, very small children who are very vulnerable to the effects of lead on their brain and in their different organs in their body, which really kind of sets them up to be behind for the rest of their lives. So this is a serious problem, we're trying to be able to address upfront and build the capacity to address that. So marketing and awareness. Secondly, the capacity of contractors to be certified, they're certified by the EPA to be certified contractors, to either assess lead or to be contractors to remove lead in the home. Elkhart County does not have one EPA certified contractor in this county. Now, there may be some outside of this county, but in our county, we have none, and this grant will help us increase the capacity of these certified lead contractors. So the grant will provide for a one full-time employee, a program manager, that will be funded by the grant. I will be the project director and some of my salary will be used as match. There's a 10% match to this $1,050,000 grant. Almost about half of this will be my salary match over three years, spread over three years, which leaves the balance of the cash match to be about $16,000 a year to be able to apply for these funds and bring them here to the city of Elkhart. If we do well with capacity building, and it also includes building coalitions of other health providers in the community like Beacon and Heart City Health, the Housing Authority, the Elkhart County Health Department, and so these funds will be used to do that, to build coalition building. If we do well with that, the HUD pretty much assumes we'll apply then for additional funds to then continue with abatement of lead that's found to be a problem in the home. We don't have to wait to do that, the state has funds we can access in the meantime, and some of these funds we're allowed to also do abatement with, particularly near the end of the three years. So I feel like this is really part of the city's effort to improve quality of place here in our community and in our homes, and is particularly targeting very vulnerable children. And to be eligible for the abatement funds, there is also an income qualification, but we would like to raise the awareness of this issue everywhere in the community, very much like they're already doing in St. Joe County and South Bend as well. And the state of Indiana Department of Health is very much encouraging us to raise this awareness and are supporting this application.
Thank you. Questions? Mr. Curry?
Yes, once we identified the problem, I was reading through this, it basically highlighted young people. I was wondering, is there effect for seniors for lead? And if we identify there is a problem in a home, how do we go in and correct that problem and at what cost to who?
Well, the abatement funds would be for children and income qualified people. Usually, the lead is, has a greater effect on youth, very vulnerable developing cases. I'm not sure by the time you're an adult and down the road a bit, you know, what the impacts might be, but these funds would not be able to be used to address that. Now, I think part of the awareness and education is to also let people know what they can do for themselves as far as dealing with lead in the home. First of all, being aware if you have the problem or not. As far as deteriorating paint, which gets dusty and you can ingest it, paint chips, that sort of thing, and there are things you can do yourself to sort of mitigate the problem. So you can mitigate or you can abate. So we would be providing education on how to mitigate it yourself in your home. We know that with the children here in the city of Elkhart, particularly in, I'm sorry, it was in, yes, in the city of Elkhart, there were 23 cases, and half of those cases, the parents refused to allow the county inside the home to do the assessment. So they had the elevated blood and the parents rejected the assessment of the house. We don't know exactly why, maybe because they didn't really know how to deal with the problem. So this is what this capacity building would do, would be to help them address the issue inside the home to abate the lead.
Thank you. Mr. Mishler.
Thank you. Councilman Curry, for adults, their lead poisoning can also impact health, leading to elevated high blood pressure and kidney damage as well. So lead poisoning can impact all ages in our community. One thing I do want to ask is, how will this information be reported? Will the reports go to you? Will it go to the state? How, who exactly, once this information is gathered, where does it go?
It's probably going to be a process of working with the county that connects with the state, because the state does track these cases. So we would probably defer back to the county's reporting system. But once there's a case determined and the assessment happens, then, and this is really kind of down the road as far as having more robust funds to do the abatement, but this is where part of these funds would be to build that coalition to work together. But the reporting does eventually go back to the state.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Crabtree.
I'm hoping you'll be working with the local school systems, because it's one thing having, you know, the government coming into your home, but having the city, or having the school system which your child participates in and goes to would be a little bit easier. So I'm hoping that's the case.
Right, yes. Well, we're targeting kids under the age of six, so by the time they're, they're just getting into school at five or six.
True, but I think maybe with partnering with the school systems, they may have True, but I think maybe with partnering with the school systems, they may have younger siblings at home who are not yet school-ready, but to getting that information into the home might be a little easier for the schools.
It does start with the testing of the blood. And so, like I said, all healthcare providers should be offering the test, but the parents can refuse it. So, I think by raising this awareness of saying, "Have your child tested," that starts there. You got to get the test, the blood test.
Mr. Hinky.
You know, I'm for the grant. I think that's a given. I'm concerned about $1 million to inform and educate and build a coalition, but not directly remediate or have a measurable impact. So, can you help me there?
So, the grant allows us in the last six months to do abatement. So, in our million-dollar budget, we've earmarked $300,000 to do abatement. The grant only allows us to do that in the last six months. At that time, we will probably be, we hope, preparing to apply for additional abatement funds. But, as earlier than this, the first two and a half years, if we come across a case where we should be doing abatement inside the home, the state of Indiana, through the Indiana Housing and Community Development Authority, they have gotten a grant of the abatement funds. So, we can direct our case here to apply for those funds in lieu of having our own funds. The other thing is, our CDBG funds can be used for abatement, our lead abatement, although those funds are somewhat limited. So, we could use some of the-
And spoken for, you know, to some degree, I guess, more money, but I'm looking at best use of money. You know, because we can throw up billboards as we normally do, but the impact of billboards is not very good. Although, you know, we control utility bills, public, you know, utility bills that go out to everyone that is on our water lines. So, it seems like an educational, should you have children six years old and maybe give some real information? I would hope that with the hospital and the community foundation, everybody that has a vested interest in controlling cost of healthcare and all of the above, that we would come up with a program that people can pick up, maybe from public utilities, based on address, lead testing kits to put in the home, maybe through the hospital, blood testing for people that meet the address limitation. I could see that part and have less money necessarily to build the coalition as much as to impact, to really understand the scope and severity of the issue.
Mm-hmm.
Would you lead that forward? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none. Thank you, Sherri. Appreciate that. Is anyone in the audience who would like to speak with regards to this resolution? Seeing none, and we turn it back to the council. Any other council discussion? Seeing none. Thank you, Sherri. You may have a seat. Mary?
What'd I call her?
You called her Sherri.
Sherri Trask. Who's Sherri? Sherri Weber. Sherri Weber from EUEA. That's who Sherri is. Yeah, Sherri Weber. I'm sorry. Excuse me. Angie, would you roll a call vote on the resolution, please?
Counselor Holtz.
Aye.
Counselor Curry.
Yes.
Counselor King.
Yes.
Counselor Michler.
Aye.
Counselor Fish.
Yes.
Counselor Heinz.
Yes.
Counselor Crabtree.
Yes.
Counselor Hinky.
Aye.
President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes nine to zero.
Thank you. There are no vacation hearings.
One more.
Okay, I'm sorry. Proposed resolution 24-r-02. Would you please read that by title only, Angie, please?
Proposed resolution 24-r-02, a resolution of the common council of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, approving the memorandum of understanding between the city of Elkhart and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Local Number 1484.
The motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Got a motion by Mr. Curry, second by Mr. Fish, and Ms. Colo has something for us.
Good evening. Congratulations, new and returning council members. For those of you-
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
For those of you I haven't met yet, I'm Laura Colo. I've been with the Water and Wastewater Utility for 31 years, and my current position is utility service manager for 18 years. And if you bear with me here for just a couple minutes, I got a little presentation I'll run through real quick. I think that'll answer hopefully all of your questions. When it comes to union matters, the utilities are unique to the rest of the city in that we have two separate unions out of the utilities. Some are doing similar work. In some cases, we've got a union member of AFSMI sitting right next to a union member from Teamsters doing the exact same work. With regards to AFSMI Local 1484, AFSMI represents CBU employees for civil city labor positions such as streets, traffic, buildings and grounds, cemetery and aviation, and I maybe forgot one or two. That's 100, maybe 125 employees there. AFSMI 1484 also represents the collective bargaining unit employees funded by the wastewater utility, which is another approximately 30 full-time employees. Because AFSMI Local 1484 represents the employees of the wastewater utility and civil city, both the city council and the board of works are governing bodies for the agreements. Teamsters Local 364 represents only the collective bargaining unit employees funded by the water utility. We have approximately 30. Because these employees are funded only, because Teamsters only funds water utility employees, only the board of works is the governing body. When a supervisor, when a utility supervisor position is temporarily vacated due to an extended vacation or other PTO or longer stint, such as when a position is actually vacated, there are certain critical duties that must be conducted to assure compliance with state and federal regulations. In the current Teamster contract, Article 25, Section 5 states, "Any bargaining unit employee who is assigned to fill in for a supervisor who is away from work for an extended period of time will be paid an hourly premium of $1 an hour." During the most recent union contract negotiations, despite best efforts for the AFSMI and Teamster contracts to mirror each other, incorporating this provision into the AFSMI contract got missed. So, the resolution before you is to amend the current AFSMI contract by adding Section 4 to Article 25, which is in your packet. For lack of reading the whole agreement here, that has been assigned, or I'm sorry, approved and signed by the board of works, and I believe the copy you have may not show that all the AFSMI representatives have also signed off on it. But, this is to allow the same provision of a dollar an hour pay increase to the base hourly rate for certain AFSMI employees of the wastewater utility who are assigned tasks typically conducted by someone in a supervisory role.
Thank you, Laura. Questions? Mr. Hinky.
So, did someone from council, were we on this negotiation team that looked over this contract that we're being asked to ratify?
I believe there were council representatives. I believe there was.
On this particular, on this particular union?
Yes.
Hold on, here comes Maggie.
Maggie Maranoka, Public Works Attorney. Yes, I was on the negotiating team, and the advisors were council person, Megan Bowman, and Arvis Dawson.
All right, so this is something that has been through this council, and you're just asking for an amendment, essentially? Okay.
Yes. Any other questions? Seeing none. Thank you both. Open it up to the public. Is anyone in the audience who'd like to speak with regards to this resolution?
Good evening. Thank you, Louisian Deputy, Elkhart Citizen. I just wanted to point out before you vote on it, on your memorandum of understanding under the preamble number two, it mentions that the common council approved this on December 6, 2023. So, that just needs to be corrected. I believe it was December 5, 2022, based on what was sent to me. So, just so there's a clarity with that.
Any other public comments? Seeing none. Return to the council floor, council discussion. Mr. Hinky.
To that point, it sounds as though if Ms. Maranoka could clarify that amendment, I'm not sure what we do with it, if the data's incorrect.
Well, the only way we know the date is incorrect is if we go back to the minutes, and I'm not sure what the minutes indicate.
Does she mean what was sent to her?
Yeah, I don't know what was sent to her. So, we have no idea what was sent to her. She said what was sent to her. We have no idea what that was.
So, we're seeing on the preamble, so, does anyone, John, John, or can I have, could we ask that there would be a clarification before we go off and have a misdated document?
Well, first of all, you're asking for a clarification on a public comment. We didn't, she, what was said was the information I received. None of us know what that information was that she received. So, that's what you're asking us.
Well, I would like to be accurate as opposed to dismissive, but I guess that's what I was after.
Well, I don't think we're being dismissive. I think that was public comment. She made her comment. We heard it. Now, you want to make an amendment, or?
I may.
Yes.
After some discussion with Laura Colo and Tori Irwin, we think it's 2022.
Okay.
Not 2023. We think that was, I believe that was the year. When I drafted the memorandum, I pulled up the, I pulled up the actual agreement that was signed.
So, could you, would you mind reading so we may make?
Before you do that, David, let's make the motion to amend, and then you can get your question answered. Is there?
Motion to amend the first paragraph of the resolution, the last line, following the word commencing, January 1, 2023 to January 1, 2022.
I-
That's correct.
No, that's not where you were.
No, to the memorandum.
The memo-
The correct date, what is the correct date, Maggie?
That's why I was asking her to read the correction.
If I may clarify, in the preamble, paragraph two, the CBA was approved by the common council on December 6, 2023, should say December 6, 2022.
All right. Okay, so-
I withdrew my amendment, sorry.
Can I get that motion? To amend as stated. But, Maggie, get a motion.
To amend as stated.
Okay. Got a motion by Mr. Hinky?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fish. Council discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Angie, would you do a roll?
Now, wait, may we approve resolution 24-r-02-r?
As amended.
As amended.
As amended. Can I get a second?
Second.
To prove that resolution as amended. Angie, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Holtz.
Aye.
Counselor Curry.
Yes.
Counselor King.
Yes.
Counselor Michler. Aye.
Counselor Fish.
Yes.
Counselor Heinz.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Counselor Hinky.
Aye.
Dawson.
Aye. Thank you. There are no vacation hearings. Is there any new business? Mr. Michler?
Yes, I just want to take a minute to thank our fire department for their heroic and rapid actions yesterday, the house fire on the 900 block of Franklin. Their heroism and dedication to duty does not go unnoticed.
Thank you. Any other new business? Mr. Hinky.
So, I think as just demonstrated, sometimes we really do need to listen to the public because commonly, they're not wrong. And this is one of those times in voting, you know, we've been to public meetings and really, we hear all topics, those germane to the council and those germane to themselves. Some give us great history and we allow that person, we all know who we're talking about, to come up and speak at will. And, you know, we smile and we move on. Some come and give us kudos, some come and give us anger, but all of them need to be welcomed, because really, this is the meeting of the public. And this is the public's government. I mean, we're here because of those folks, and they should be allowed to speak their piece, not deprived of the First Amendment rights. And I was asked to say something on behalf of Mark Detmer, Angie Davis, and Kevin Foy, who felt as though they were deprived. So, I'm hopeful that moving forward, we would give greater consideration to those who come before us and those that we actually serve. So, there's number one. Number two, I'm just on one of those that I've called 3-1-1 so many times, and to drive by the same houses months and months later, to see the same things over and over, the same vehicles in the yards, rutting and all of those things, the same trash, the same boarded-up windows, repeat calls without corrective action limits the purpose of the calls made and then decreases the participation, because I don't call as much anymore. If it's not going to get fixed, why am I calling? Why should I take my time if the people paid full-time upfront aren't doing their part? I've called in, I don't know, a good hundred last year, and I just don't want to repeat that same thing without some corrective action being taken in my district and every district I drive through. And we talk about it, but we need to see some action here, guys. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other new business?
Counsel, President Dawson, I was wondering if this is the appropriate time to do appointments to Redevelopment Commission?
This would be. If you would, I'd like to start, we need to appoint, Brent Curry is currently appointed to the EDC, and that board does not meet on a regular basis, just as needed basis. So, if there are no objections, can I get a motion to appoint Brent Curry to the Economic Development Commission?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Crab, Ms. Crabtree, second by Ms. Heinz. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Also, the Urban Enterprise, Elkhart Urban Enterprise Association, we have two appointments, Therese Geising and Bill Labrie, who have both indicated that they would like to remain as part of that board. They've been a value to that board to the time they've been there. So, if I get a motion to adopt-
So moved.
Those two, I got a motion by Mr. Hinky, second by Mr. Curry, to adopt those two to the Urban, Elkhart Urban Enterprise Association. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. For the Redevelopment Commission, Dinah Harris and Wes Steffen have both indicated that they are willing to stay on in the transition that is happening right there. I think it'd be great to keep the continuity going.
So moved.
So, if I get a motion to move those forward as well. I have a motion by Mr. Hinky, second by Mr. Holtz. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Aurora Capital, both Dinah Harris and Wes Steffen from the Redevelopment, who also serve at the Redevelopment Commission, are appointees there. If I get a motion to have those continue that-
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Chad Cre, second by Mr. Michler. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any other new business?
Did we miss it? Was it you?
No, it was Chad Tree.
Okay. Chad. So, he's long. Okay, there's reports, mayor, board of works, board of safety, department heads.
Good evening, council. I'd like to also thank the fire department for their immediate actions in this most recent blaze that- blaze that occurred on Franklin Street as well. But I also would like to thank police and fire for their efforts over the holidays. Holidays are always tough on police and fire. We were able to get through the holidays, for the most part, for a city our size, in good condition. And so, it's very important for us to say that when we're asleep or we're celebrating their own duty, and that's very much appreciated. Also, I'd like to thank the, over the course of the years, thousands of people who called and used 311 effectively. And the calls were noted, the calls were examined and resolved to some degree. Those that linger are those that we are consistently working on from now through the time in which they will get resolved. But 311 has been a very effective tool for the city, and we're going to continue to utilize it. And many citizens call us and let us know that. I want to thank the council for their work in that area as well, each of your districts. You know how many calls have come in, and you know how many calls have been resolved. And so, with that said, we appreciate you putting it online, appreciate your calling LaShawn, but we want to make sure that we make this as proactive as possible. And so, please, stay with it. It's evolving, it's expanding, and we're using it effectively.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other departments? Seeing none, neighborhood associations, Great Fifth District. Yes, sir. Mr. Curry?
Yeah, I'd like to report for the Pemaran Neighborhood Association. We held our meeting yesterday at the Pemaran Park Pavilion at 5:00 PM, and it was another good meeting, neighbors coming together with information about our neighborhood and what they have seen going on, good or something challenging, and things we'd like to do in 2024, we're starting to create a directory, we're going to go do some door-to-door to try to get information from people that don't attend the meetings, where we can contact them on a regular basis. And also, we talked about maybe doing some tours around the city, maybe a tour of the airport, a tour of our great fire department that's in our area, and just kind of get to know people better that run these places for the city. And also, we were very proud to find out that our own Rayanne Haney is in the play in Bristol. She's one of the young people that live in our neighborhood and be performing January 19th and 20th, I believe. So we plan to go and support her in that, and it's just good to kind of get to know the kids in our neighborhood and support them with whatever they're doing. Thank you.
Any other neighborhood? Ms. Hanky?
I'm out of order, but I would like to thank the council who donated and provided chimes to my brother George's funeral. I should have said something, but it was greatly appreciated, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Any other? All right, privilege of the floor, this time, is anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on anything to come before the Elkhart City Council? Please come forward, state your name. Seeing none, return to the council. The no scheduling of committee meetings, acceptance of communications. Can I get a motion to accept communications? Got a motion by Mr. Hanky, second by Mr. Michler, that we accept communications. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Got a motion, second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.